June 30, 2021, Wacoitt Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. It is 6:00. We are broadcast live on local channel 18. Conference number is 508-539-1400, extension 8585, and we're streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, www.mashpee.gov/channeledash18. I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in this pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business, approval of the minutes from two meetings, the 16th and the Any discussion, changes, edits? Hearing seeing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes for both the meeting on June 16th, meeting on June 21st.
Can I just have one second?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve the minutes for the 16th and the 21st?
So be it.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is a vote. Thank you. Okay, tonight is the first in a series of meetings that are going to go into very specific topics about the community activity center overlay district. So tonight's discussion is around subzones and uses. So if there is, there are folks here for public comment, I would ask you to please have your comments focused on that topic. The schedule of meetings was published ahead of time. They run through July with very specific topics at each meeting. So if you're going to have public comment or questions, I'd ask you to please make them relevant to tonight's topic, which is subzones and uses. First on the list is Judith Conway.
My name is Judith Conway. I live at 64 East Oak Lane in Mashpee. I do want to start my comments by saying that I really feel quite offended by the fact that--
Excuse me, miss, would you make sure you're speaking into the microphone?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
I was quite offended by the fact that an article in the paper portrayed my concerned colleagues as negative. We're not negative. We're concerned citizens that are hoping that this proposal is going to be done correctly, protecting the environment, and providing for some of the issues. I have one example of one of the facts that has not been forthcoming yet, and that's fire safety. I'm the daughter, granddaughter, niece, and sister-in-law of firefighters. I know more about fire safety than the average person. Mr. Phelan has told me that we do have a 20-year-old ladder truck that is, I'm assuming, in pretty good shape, that could probably reach people that may be trapped in a four-and-a-half or four-star unit. My concern is, do we have egress? Big ladder truck coming in, has to go down an alley, the extenders have to be put out? Has anybody thought about this? I know you're not going to respond yet, but I mean, it's a concern. And I get a little disconcerted when a group like the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce gives their blanket approval without any facts forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask again, please make your comments relative to tonight's topic, which is subzones and uses. Next up, Beth Hennessy.
Just to give you heads up, I'll give you 30 seconds left. I'll show you this. Okay.
Good evening, Chairman Philone, members of the board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Beth Hennessy, and I live year-round in Pirate's Cove. I'm relatively new to Mashpee. I've lived here only five years. I don't know the history that Mr. Chase and Mashpee Commons have with this community and its residents. I don't know if Mr. Chase has made good on the agreements he made with the town when he first built Mashpee Commons. Perhaps he's done wonderful things for this community about which I am unaware. Perhaps he made promises then that are as yet unfulfilled. I honestly don't know. Like everyone else who lives in a small community, I hear people talk. Please know, I am not opposed to development in Mashpee. I am, however, opposed to irresponsible development that disrespects the people of the town and the environment in which we live. To believe that it's in all our best interests to work together to build confidence between government, developers, and community achieved through transparency and willingness to accept accountability is my fantasy, but it's not a reality. The best interests of a developer are to maximize profits. The best interests of the town are complicated and enumerated by a multiplicity of concerns. Somewhere between these two dichotomies of simple profit motive and a diversity of community interest is a sweet spot where we can all coexist and be content, satisfied, that we've made the best choices possible to meet our needs. Today, at our current build-out, people come to Mashpee to swim, and boat, and fish, and walk in the woods and on the beach. These resources are the lifeblood of our community and its economy. If the water's bad, the air quality is bad, the traffic too intense, or the town too much like the cities from which our visitors are escaping, they will go elsewhere. One of my fears is that if the community activity center is built as planned, we'll be left holding an empty oversized shopping bag with nothing to show for our time, our money, and the wealth of our community that we traded away for it. Thank you.
One more time. Topic tonight, subzones and uses. If your comments aren't focused on subzones and uses, I would ask you to please--
Can you explain what subzone and uses are making--
Well, it was in the--
Yeah, but we're at a meeting tonight.
Yep, subzones. The subzones are the core area, the transition area, and the edge area that were described in the first presentation that the Commons gave. They've been on the town website since that presentation, so at least a month. And the schedule of meetings has been published for at least two weeks. The topic tonight is subzones and uses.
Did you put that in the agenda, that you were only going to take comment on subzones and uses? Because I just think you have three more people, just let them speak.
We have--
You did say it last week. I did hear that, the last meeting.
Yep.
I didn't hear it. I didn't hear it. It's not on the agenda, I just think that--
It was stated at the last meeting. There's a reason we have focused meetings scheduled so that we can get through one topic at a time.
So people are going to hear about this, some of them, for the first time. You're not going to take comment on it next time?
There were-- The presentation has been available for anyone who wants to read it. It was presented a month ago, and it was made available on the town website, I think the morning after.
I just think you're just being too strict with people. You should just let them speak.
Subzones and uses, that was the reason we put the schedule together.
I'm uncomfortable with this. People are going to get frustrated if we just don't let them speak.
We've given--
You've already cut them down to two minutes. Just let them speak.
Mary, we've allowed public comment at every meeting. We've been very liberal with the public comment so far. You're entitled to your opinion.
I don't think two minutes is liberal at all.
We've been very liberal. It's a special meeting tonight for the purpose of subzones and uses. If your comments are not relevant to that topic, please respect everybody's time.
I would just--
Next up is Lynn Barbie.
Can't have a meeting without visual aids. I do have a comment about subzones and uses.
Thank you.
To the planning board, I shared my views with the select board on Monday. I'll provide a copy to the planning board for the minutes. Many, I asked, where is the development agreement proposal for Mashpee Commons? I repeat, why doesn't the town, that is you, the planning board, have a copy of it? I've read the zoning bylaw proposal, and I'd like a number of clarifications so far on subzones and uses. For example, agricultural use. It seems to me, from what I read, I could raise chickens in my backyard in the housing area. And solar, we have a solar bylaw. I don't know if that's applying. Institutional uses, I'm wondering if you can't have commercial use in the residential areas. Can somebody have a home-based childcare? I have questions about that. But how can I address subzones and uses if I don't have a copy of the regulating plan and the design book? Without a full detailed picture of the expansion plan, how can I, or you, or anyone, place sections of the zoning bylaw in the context of the whole plan? We can't support something we don't have, much less have had time to get clarification on, and the promised extensive comment input. So if support from the voters is important to you, please get and share the regulating plan and design book before moving forward with the zoning conversations. Then our comments and input can be specific and direct on all of these upcoming issues. Selectmen assured us again on Monday, there's no zoning without a signed development agreement. We'll just have to review, rewrite, and renegotiate the zoning once we've got the plan. As I said to the select board in our cart before the horse scenario--
I'm sorry, your time is up.
--the horse is mysteriously missing. Can you tell us where is the horse--
I'm sorry, your--
--in the regulating plan and design book?
Time is up. Thank you.
I have myself time, but you wanted details on zoning and uses.
Thank you. Next up is Karen Faulkner.
Gentlemen and lady, I wasn't going to speak tonight. I have no script of any sort, but I looked at this today, and I got really upset about this. It says Mashpee Commons Development Agreement Information. And then it says, for those who've been following, those who are just tuning in, the Mashpee Planning Board will be meeting throughout the month, June specifically, to review and refine a proposed zoning amendment designed to facilitate the development of the CAC. You know, it's just a joke here, because you said we're going to do the development agreement first, and now the only thing you're talking about here is the zoning bylaw amendment. One of the questions I have is, I'll talk about the subzones, and I'm--thank you, Dennis, for telling us what that meant, because I wasn't sure. Now, I'm familiar with those three areas. My question is, I drove down to New Seabury a week or two ago, and I've been there before, of course, but I saw the houses, the cottages. I know they're selling for $1 million. They're right next to each other. They're really ugly. There's very little vegetation, and the thing that I found the most offensive was the grass. Perhaps it's this wide to the street, you're practically on the street, and then to put your second car, assuming you have a second car, because you just have a one-car garage, they cut out a piece of the grass in the shape of a car, so you can park your car parallel to the building, to the house. It's $1 million. And here they are selling, but they are so ugly. I'm sorry, I just don't like the look of them at all. They're not-- And it is a Chase product, because this is coming back from a special permit from, I don't know, the 1960s. So you have a right to do this, but I'm praying that you're not going to put anything ugly like that in the edge or somewhere in this project. And I would like to not let that's in your connotation.
Evan, would you?
I don't believe Phase 4 of the cottages is developed by Cornish or any Chase-related companies, just for clarification.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't--
Phase 4 of the cottages, I don't believe, and Buff can probably clarify this when he gives a presentation, was developed by Mashpee Commons or any of their associated companies.
It was not by his dad?
I don't know, but it was not developed by Mashpee Commons or any of its related companies.
I still like the kind of answers that I've suggested, this conversation.
Next up is Arden Russell.
Good evening, Arden Russell, Cadre and Sturgis Lane. I actually, tonight, have a request that I hope you will consider. The request is pertinent to all the zoning review. As the planning board reviews each piece of the zoning changes proposed by Mashpee Commons, if you could please articulate how their proposal differs from the current existing zoning. We want you to compare it to what is allowed now as a point of reference. This would be really helpful for all of us who are following along, and will add clarity as to the requested zoning amendments.
Thank you. And Richard Klein.
Richard Klein, 205 Asher's Path West. I only have one question. When you're talking about the core area of Mashpee Commons, what happened to it? Why wasn't it completed? There's a lot of vacant space that they still can work on. They just abandoned that area. Are they going to do that with everything else that they do? That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, Eliza, you're going to be doing the presentation?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Buff Chase with Mashpee Commons. I think tonight I will read a statement, and then unfortunately, Tom Ferrante, who is our engineer and construction manager, came in this afternoon, so I will also present the slides, and then Eliza will follow up at the end, and we'll both take questions.
Thank you.
Does that sound okay?
Yep.
Okay. So, good evening. Mashpee Commons is my family-owned business. We love this community and have strived to be good and philanthropic neighbors for more than four decades. It has been our mission to seek input and collaborate with the community as Mashpee Commons grows and evolves. In fact, we held a multi-year community engagement, this is pre-COVID. We held a multi-year community engagement process focused on the proposed expansion project that is under consideration today. I thank you, the Mashpee Planning Board, along with the Mashpee Board of Selectmen and the Cape Cod Commission, for the willingness to join in a voluntary collaborative discussion that I hope will result in an unprecedented three-party development agreement. We are navigating previously uncharted waters with this innovative planning approach, with the sincere hope that it yields a project that is beneficial to all of us. The public meetings to date have produced many substantive questions. This is understandable and welcomed for the purpose of defining the new development agreement process. As we move forward, it is necessary that all parties to this agreement understand their role and responsibilities, and clearly articulate how and when the details of the proposal will be discussed. The basis for any successful agreement is good faith amongst the parties. The agreement process requires and deserves a thoughtful and fact-based consideration of the components of the proposal. I think we can all agree that the interests of the people of Mashpee will be best served by civil discourse. I'm confident that the rules of decorum, properly implemented, can and produce the informative deliberation the citizens of this town deserve. I hope we can collectively commit to these basic principles moving forward. The parties must avoid making statements that are not factual. It's counterproductive to our process. I want to address a few points of misinformation that have been presented in recent weeks. Cape Cod is suffering from an affordable and workforce housing crisis. Affordable housing is a top priority for the expansion project, and a minimum of the 10% of the units at Mashpee Commons will be affordable. We are committed to creating housing for a range of income levels and age groups. That's why the project has received the support of Housing Assistant Corporation and Preservation of Affordable Housing, among others. The majority of the property included in the proposal is currently zoned C1 commercial, allowing for a typical big-box type of development with no housing. Nobody wants that. It's the opposite of what Mashpee Commons has already built and is proposing for its expansion. The proposed zoning amendment will allow Mashpee Commons to build desperately needed housing, all in the Community Activity Center place type encouraged by the Cape Cod Commission. Most importantly, the project will protect the area from becoming a sprawling landscape of vehicle dump-dependent development. Mashpee Commons has always owned and operated its own state-of-the-art wastewater management facility, and has even allowed several town municipal buildings to utilize the plant. We were way ahead of the curve on this. All future development will also connect to this plant, which has ample capacity. Maintaining open space, green space, is a major priority and objective of this expansion project. Environmentally sensitive areas near the rivers and wetlands will be protected as parkland space. The development of a trail system will increase accessibility to these natural resources by bike or foot. Keeping with Mashpee Commons tradition, the expansion will be constructed in familiar New England-style architecture. All elements will be designed to preserve the town's charm by providing a traditional look and feel with green spaces, civic spaces, and recreation opportunities. I know everyone on the board understands their official role and knows they should not express a bias against an applicant prior to the consideration of a proposal. I also hope that we can all agree that outside the bounds of a public meeting, parties shouldn't engage in publicly facing discussions, including on social media, with facts that are untruthful or attempts to negatively characterize another party's intent. We all benefit from a process based on a collaborative, good-faith efforts to ensure the proposed project meets the needs and expectations of the community. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board, and I hope we can move forward with a mutual understanding that every party to this agreement should be treated with dignity and respect. The tone of our discourse must be worthy of the citizens of this town. Thank you. And so now I will attempt, much less well than Tom would have, to go through the slides. And if Evan has shown me how to do this properly, I will proceed.
Do you guys have the lights?
Okay. So there has been some discussion. This slide is in response to what's the difference between a development agreement and a development of regional impact, which was the former way that the Cape Cod-- not the former way, but the way the commission has dealt in the past with these types of projects, but under the current zone, and Eliza can get into this a little bit more in her remarks. But so, the development of regional impact is addressing a specific building program for a specific parcel. The reason this is different is because it's an agreement over a larger piece of land with multiple uses that have, you know, primarily housing, but also commercial. And it has an extended duration of development, or 25 years is what we're looking towards. And it has a framework with predictability for both the town and the developer. So we will be working with other builders and developers, sort of sub-developers, and we'll act more as a shepherd, looking over these various parcels, and working with the town and the new developer to actually build. Well, that'll give us more capacity to provide the housing that we all know is dramatically This is a slide that talks about the different subjects of future discussions when we come before you. The neighborhood design issue that would-- in that meeting, we'll talk about dimensional requirements, setbacks, lot coverage. Also, there'll be a density. We'll discuss density, particularly as it relates to housing, and then we'll also discuss parking separately. Okay, so this is the map that I think you've seen before. It basically shows the three zones. The core area of the zone is the area in current downtown Mashpee Commons, and that will have the most density, and as well as-- and it will go over, as you can see, over into the east, what we call the East Steeple Street neighborhood. The middle, the yellow, is the transition area, which transitions-- I guess maybe I'm going to describe this later, so maybe I'll just go to the next slide, see if that does that. Okay, yeah, so this is the core area. As I described before, it's approximately 58 acres. In the core area, the allowable uses are all residential uses, institutional and educational uses, agricultural uses. I know there was a question about that, but I don't see many chickens being in that area, but under, I guess-- you explained this to me, Eliza, right?
Yeah, I'll just jump in on that. So under the Massachusetts Zoning Act, there are exemptions for agricultural uses that prevent towns from regulating them beyond what's allowed under the statute. And so we've carried that agricultural use allowed in every zoning district in accordance with the general laws.
So if I have a apartment, and I need a lob clock, can I get a rooster? That won't be allowed in there, right?
There are 5 acres for a rooster.
You don't? Okay.
We've also--
No, I just know that. I haven't able--
We've also, in the definition, in the draft zoning ordinance, created some setback requirements in addition to what would be under the table that's contained in the bylaw.
So anyway, I don't imagine there's going to be a lot of agricultural uses in it, but it's a vestigial, I think, from history in zoning. Commercial uses, industrial uses, parking facilities, and solar voddy systems, and accessory uses. Okay, so that's the center. Here is the core example that we have is the existing buildings in Pottery Barn and the Old Century Bank Building, which is now purged in. So that's an image of the core. So that's an image of the core. The transition area is slightly smaller than the core area. It's 52 acres. It is what it says it is. It's a transition from the more dense core area to the more residential area. It provides a mixture of uses. Let me go to there. Okay, all residential uses, institutional, educational, same thing, commercial, except hotel motel, permanent outdoor flea markets, and motor vehicle services. So we're not going to have a car sales in the transitional -- and then the same solar votech and accessory uses. These are -- we used two of the slides, I mean, two of the slides are with existing Mashpee Commons buildings, and two are from other areas, but that's the character. Okay, finally, we've gotten to the edge area, which is 77 acres, and that includes all residential uses except mixed-use residential. So mixed-use residential would be a building that had residential on the upper floors and commercial on the lower floors. And Eliza, would it would permit apartment buildings with concrete care or -- oh, by special permit?
By special permit, right.
Certain institutional and educational uses, it's basically the same, except there's no commercial uses there, except for, I guess, concrete care might be considered a commercial use if it was, but in that case, we would have come to you for a special permit. And this is an image of the area, particularly this one is of the area between Job's Fishing Road and Deer Crossing. Single-family, maybe duplex townhouse, but that's the scale. So that's the three of them together again. I will come back to the beginning slide. Okay, and the next one, and that's existing Mashpee Commons. So that's the end of my presentations, and we can take questions now?
I think that makes sense. We're happy to answer any questions, and then I did want to, towards the end, talk about the next steps and the next meetings that we have scheduled.
And I can go back if anybody wants to see other slides.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dennis.
On this plan you gave us, I was counting the excess to get out of this project.
The excess?
I see.
Oh, access?
Access, yes, it's going to be. And I see you add one more on 28 before Donald's Lane on this picture, and I only see, coming down 151, one, two more added. Oh, and there's another one here, though that's going into the church, yep. So that's how you're going to get in on it? I've been asking for a master plan. I don't mean all the buildings, but a layout, so I can understand this better. I can't, I'm having a hard time working on this. You said you wanted to get together. So we've been asking, I've been asking for a master plan that I can actually look at and say, gee, this looks pretty good, it could work out, you know?
So are you referring to the traffic?
The traffic. I want to know how you're going to get out of this project. Once it's developed, it's going to be a lot of traffic coming into this, and right now it's a hard time in the summer to get in here. When you get this developed, plus the summer, and you have to get special permit, permission to cut access off of 151, that's a state road, or is that a town road? So we have to get special permission from the state to have a cut to come in there on 28. I don't see adding no more. And then over in Trump's --
Can I comment for a second?
Okay.
Dennis, so there's a chicken-and-egg process here, right? We haven't gotten into that kind of detail because --
I'm not asking for a basic plan. You must have some ideas, how you're going to --
Well, we do, we have hired a traffic engineer, and we plan to meet with the Cape Cod Commission's traffic engineer, and that's the kind of detail that we will be coming back to you with, is that obviously the Cape Cod Commission, I can't remember his name, it's Steve Tupper.
Yes.
You know, will be looking over our shoulders and making sure that the traffic works. Our traffic engineer, Randy Hart, will be doing the same thing. And we're also, I propose, working with Evan and Rodney to see how we can, you know, give priority to local traffic. So basically, the regional roadways go through this area, east to west, right? So I think we need to figure out collectively how to make the north-south traffic work better, you know? And Dennis, you may even remember, but I can't even remember, it was 20 years ago or 25 years ago, I sat on something called the Rotary Bypass Committee.
Yeah, I was --
Yeah, I think we were maybe on it together or something.
You made fun of me because I was working on the Big Dig.
Yeah, yeah.
And I went out to put a channel.
Right, right. So the only thing that actually was manifested out of that was Job's Fishing Road, which is connected 28 to 151. But I think there were other connections that were identified then that should be reconsidered. And so I totally agree with you. The more, I mean, we have this situation where we have regional traffic, and then we have local traffic, and we want to see if we can provide better for local traffic so that they don't have to get into the regional traffic system.
One of my main concerns, too, the fire department, too, during the summer, if they have to get in there and there's only like two or three ways to get in there, we could have trouble in the Whiting's neighborhood. They've got a truck from the fire station all the way up to there.
So these are the kind of specific questions that we need to respond to and identify, and that will be part of our process.
And I like you working with Evan, because this is a town issue. Cape Cod Commission's fine, but the town, I'd like to have the town have more say than the Cape Cod Commission.
Right, well, we're trying to all work together and take all the considerations, the town considerations and the regional --
You put Evan second. You should have put Evan first. You're going to work with the town, then the Cape Cod Commission. Just that, my point of view, okay?
All right. Can you tell your boss that?
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
No, and I think Rodney's on board with this, too. And in fact, one of the things that this, as you know, the Selectment delayed the consideration of this to the first quarter of next year. So one of the things we decided we'd utilize that time doing is doing more of this, the analysis that Dennis is suggesting.
That was good to me.
Thank you. Yep, go ahead, Jack.
So just to piggyback on what Dennis just said, so and I kind of understand what Dennis is talking about, so when you look at this diagram here, although all these curb cuts under 151 currently exist, they're there already.
Yeah.
Every single one's already there. But when you look at this, you see what they have laid out in the Whiting's neighborhood, but when you go to the east of that, on the other side of Great, 28, you know, you see those two, the transition area and the edge area, but there's no diagram of what you're planning to do there. So sometimes, and I can understand what Dennis is saying, it's hard to understand what you're going to do in those areas, because there's no, there's nothing there. You don't have any diagrams or anything to explain what you're doing.
Is this the one you're doing?
Nope, nope, on the east of 28.
Trout Pond.
Yeah, Trout Pond, that whole area there, the transition, the edge area there, there's nothing on the plan yet. And I think that goes back to what Dennis is saying, we're looking for something that kind of just gives us the whole idea, if given that we follow, just hypothetically, that we follow around what you're looking for, for zoning changes, is this what it ultimately would look like? And so without it being there, we can't, you know, picture in our mind.
Well, we've tried to give you some images of what transition looks like, so.
But for that area over there, there's clearly going to be curb cuts, and there's clearly, as pointed back out 25 years ago, because I do remember that committee, and I do remember they're talking about doing an overpass as well as an underpass.
That was Tom.
Yeah, and there was mentioned back then, putting in ways to go through that area to help us get on it to 28, so curb cuts are --
I think that's likely, a likely solution.
And I'm guessing the reason why you don't have anything there, because you haven't decided what those curb cuts would be, so that's why you focused on it.
Yeah, it's just not, and it isn't just up to us. It's, once again, it's a collective decision about whether that's a good idea, and it has to be measured by engineers and, you know, what's the design of the intersection, all that stuff. So we'll come back to you with that.
But just to put the fire department to bed, both Massachusetts State Law, Town Mashpee bylaws, all regulate the width of roadways. There's a minimum roadway width in the town bylaw of 20 feet. The fire truck doesn't need 20 feet. The fire truck, with the jacks fully out, is under 18 feet. So we don't have a problem with that. That is all determined. We keep talking about alleyways. We don't have alleyways that can't meet this code. They have to follow the state building code under the eighth edition, which is currently out there, or the ninth edition, and 527 CMX, which is fire code. So I'm not worried about fire department access. They have to do that. So we can just put that to bed. I will tell you right now, as a member of the fire department, I'm not going to allow, being part of this board, anything that's going to inhibit our access to provide safety to you, to the people in this town.
I'm glad you had it.
Yeah, I would just add that the purpose of this plan is really to show the zones in the three different colors, and not to get into the details of where a curb cut is or isn't proposed. As Buff said, that's going to be part of ongoing conversations as we work our way through the process.
Are you completely committed to what you have here for zones now, as far as how they're laid out? For instance, the core area, how it expands over into the east and south sides, yeah, the Steeple section?
Well, it's, see, there's obviously a number of masters here. One of them is, you know, producing affordable and workforce housing is one of them. So there is somebody sitting somewhere that's doing the math, and so the math to be able to pay for the infrastructure improvements are, at least at this point in the game, looked like, and if we want to go more towards housing and less towards commercial, that, you know, the number of units that we have come up with is in that range. We could, you know, collectively go back more towards the commercial. I mean, one of the things we've had in there is institutional and educational. Wouldn't it be great if we could land a regional college or something like that? But there, you know, and there were some discussions before 2010 or 2008 with a regional college that was interested, but, you know, the world changed, so. But if we had a thing that was in a development agreement that allowed for that use, then we could go out and try and rekindle that conversation. So, but the answer is no, we're open to, you know, hearing why we should change a line one way or the other. But I just wanted to mention that overall, there's a math issue that we also have to be aware of.
I understand.
Yep.
Anybody else? Thank you, Jack. Go ahead, Evan.
A brief comment, kind of for the board's consideration and the community's. I've said this before, but I think it's worth stressing. The zoning bylaw as proposed now breaks it out into these individual subzones, right? And really, I think the conversation that we should be considering, the conversation we should be considering over the next number of weeks as we review the zoning bylaw is one of design. We should be inherently focused on what the zoning produces by way of density, building type, and whether or not the core transition and edge, as outlaid on the preliminary proposed map, is consistent with the desires of the town, the needs of the town, and the design principles being proposed. And just with regard to how we proceed throughout the development agreement process, and some of the many substantive and thoughtful impact-related questions that the board has received in public comments and in written letters, I just feel from a professional perspective that, and a technical one, that the board is in a much better position to negotiate on behalf of the town those impact-related questions when we have set parameters with regard to density. The zoning is what defines the density. So if we don't have a well-established parameter of how many people are going to be living and working in this space, then we're not in as good a position to discuss and manage and mitigate those impacts collaboratively with the developer and the Cape Cod Commission. So that's just the only point I wanted to make.
Good point.
So I feel like it is to the benefit to allow these discussions to continue. We haven't even gotten through the proposal yet. So I think it's to our benefit to understand the proposal and then outline the subsequent needs, the needs of the process. I think clarity around what's being proposed and the density being proposed will put the board and the town in a much better position to collaborate, discuss.
Thank you. Mary?
So I'm glad Evan brought up design. I don't know if you know this, Mr. Chase, but I've asked for the design book several times. Could we get the design book?
Design guidelines, I think.
The design guidelines, is that what you're requesting? Yes. So they're in the process of being prepared. We don't have those yet. So I don't know if you know this, but the package that you gave us, it's fuzzy. I can't read it. I'm having trouble understanding what's going on because the graphics aren't even clear. So last week, I sent a message to, you know, your group through Evan that I wanted the design book and a better regulating plan. Mr. Balzerini and Mr. Phelan have also asked for a more detailed plan.
The person that we've retained to do that who's not able to get it done, and I think next week is what he, is it next week or the following week that he said that he could get it done?
Yeah, I think, you know, the next topical conversation that we have deals with the page that you're looking at, setbacks, lot coverage, and the dimensional requirements. But we can make sure that this is difficult to read, we'll get you cleaner copies before the next meeting.
So what happens is, and I know, I work with applicants all the time, they say, oh, we have a meeting on Wednesday, so we'll bring it to the meeting on Wednesday. But I can't give you all my comments if I'm provided the materials on an evening night. Do you know what I mean? And the planning department tries to get the package out by Friday, and they do a pretty good job doing that. So today's Wednesday. So I'm having difficulties, you know, coming up with all the comments and any type of opinion on this, because I can't, I don't have enough information. And I --
We hear you.
From the first meeting, I asked for this, and I asked for this in 2018. So there was an email sent to your group in 2018 asking for all this stuff, and that needs to be addressed. It's --
I just told you, Ms. Wagon, that we will address it in the next week or two.
I think that we, I don't want to be negative on this, you know, this is very exciting for the town, but I don't think we should go on until we have those materials. It's so difficult to have these meetings and think about it when we don't have a good regulating plan and design guides.
Well, we have a meeting on the seventh, and the topic of that meeting is neighborhood design, setbacks, lot coverage. I'm assuming we will get materials, and it would be helpful to get those materials ahead of time, so that we can have a chance to review them, formulate questions, so that we can have a productive conversation.
Mr. Chairman, if we wanted to get them the Friday before, which is, I think, what Ms. Wagon is referring to, then that's going to be difficult since that's like the day after tomorrow. So maybe we just, if you want to do the neighborhood design, maybe we need to delay to the next, to the following week or something.
Okay.
Because I know they're not completed yet.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you want to work with Evan on the, I don't mind if the, I think it's okay to move the topics around. I think the meetings, let's try to hold to --
But then the maximum density and building height.
May I finish?
The next one's the density and height, which really lays into this.
Yes, so.
I need those materials for that.
So let me finish. We've got to schedule the seventh, the 21st, and the 28th. The 14th is missing, if we need to schedule on the 14th. But we've got three meetings. If we can, you know, if, Eliza, you can work with Evan to find out, you know, it would be helpful to get the materials ahead of time. Does it have to be Friday? It'd be great if it was Friday, because then we can spend the week, most of us spend the weekend looking at these things.
I would agree. I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Should we, we got to advertise, though, we're changing the schedule, right?
Well, we're changing the topics.
The topics, so make sure that --
So let's find out what they, you know, work through the --
Mr. Chairman?
Is that a reasonable request?
Can I say something?
Went up through, just a minute.
But it affects this. Because there's no topic on there I can go forward on without the design book and a better regulating plan. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, I don't think the seventh is feasible. I don't think any three of those topics are feasible without the design and the...
Go ahead, Evan.
I don't want to interrupt Mary. If it's okay, you let her finish her comment before I chime in.
So, I don't think there's any subject on this list we can go forward with without the design book and a regulating plan. And I did, I did, I've asked for it several times. I've asked for it for years. I've asked for it last week through Evan. I don't think it's unreasonable to say, let's not go forward until you give us those materials.
Evan?
I think the intent of the topical meetings, as they've been proposed, was to really discuss urban design principles and best practice as they relate to the dimensional criteria defined in the zoning bylaw. There's very good reasons for the dimensional criteria as they've been proposed, and the goal, I think, of the meeting was merely for the board to listen to the architect and urban designer describe to you the methodology rationale and architectural best practice that's built into the dimensional criteria. I think that's a conversation that can happen without additional detail because it's really an educational opportunity for the board and those who attend or follow our meetings. Whether the board wants to proceed in that manner or not and take advantage of that opportunity is up to you. But I think that was the intent, as we have discussed, it was for you to get an understanding of what the dimensional criteria means for the built environment. And then we could get into the more refined detail that would be shown on a regulating plan that we've discussed or any other materials. How the board wants to proceed is ultimately the board's decision, but I think the intent was merely to educate you on the architectural best practice defined in the proposed zoning.
Thank you. Jack?
The seventh is a regularly scheduled meeting, correct?
It is. We have regular business on that day.
So, if we take it as an educational opportunity, and really, it's an educational opportunity to understand what you're talking about and not regarding the actual proposal itself, I would acquiesce to that and be fine with it because I have some of the concerns too. Because really, when you look at this, when I look at this, I don't know what that means when I'm staring at that. It's hard for me to place that in place, and, you know, and I think we all share the same, just like confusion. And maybe an educational opportunity, even if it's just a half hour prior to our regularly scheduled meeting, I think it might be a benefit for us.
Not about this project specifically.
Not about the project itself, but about...
Not about this bylaw specifically.
Correct.
Good idea.
This is actually one of the things that I had wanted to discuss at the end of the meeting today. I think as the board is aware, when we initially submitted this draft zoning bylaw to you all on June 2nd, it was with the aim of trying to get the zoning bylaw at the fall town meeting. That obviously has changed, and we're not, you know, no longer suiting for that timeframe. I think a lot of the comments that we're hearing from the board and the public and also from the board of selectmen are comments really related to the development agreement process and less about the language of the zoning. And so, one of the comments that I wanted to bring back to the board for discussion today is, does it make sense to continue on with these conversations under the schedule that we've previously proposed? Or should we take a pause in these conversations, get further along in the development agreement process, and then resequence the zoning? So, this is something that, you know, we've also been discussing internally. We want to make these meetings productive. We want to collaborate with you and with the Cape Cod Commission. But given the change in sequencing, which, you know, the board has also told us that's how you want to do it, proceed with the development agreement with the zoning to follow, we're open to that conversation.
I like that idea.
I do, too. I'm finding this bylaw very frustrating without the development agreement. And you know, the initial questions that I asked and the questions that I asked in 2018 are going to be answered by the development agreement process. And that really has a big influence on the zoning because it goes right down to density and height.
And that gives you more time to put the things that we asked for, you know, and to have... And another thing, John, should this be on the internet so the audience, the town people can see those bylaw changes, not like we're going to get it on a Friday? I hope the town folk gets...
Oh, yeah, all this, all this information has been on the website. Yeah, I think they get it up the next day.
Buff was just saying, though, if it's helpful to have some educational overviews about this type of design, we're certainly, we can move forward with those, you know, in the short term as well.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's helpful. I, the only, what I struggle with, you know, thinking about a development agreement without thinking about the zoning at the same time is, how do you, how do you put together a thoughtful development agreement not knowing what the zoning is going to provide for?
Right.
Because you're sort of building, you're building this plan, and then you've got to go back and try to retrofit it into the zoning or change the, so I struggle with that. That's why running parallel paths made sense to me.
It's a very fair comment. I mean, I think one of the main focus of this board is the zoning in the development agreement. So, this is certainly front and center with the, with the local review. That said, I feel like we could catch up a little more with the development agreement process before we get into the new study of the zoning bylaw. And I think that might be helpful for the discourse and for the education overall as you try to consider, you know, the zoning that's before you.
And I agree with John. I like to see this work together so at the end, we can come to an agreement, yes or no.
Right, right. It would be, and we have...
The zoning is way ahead.
Well, and we have, we have made it clear, and the selectmen have made it clear, we won't ask the residents of Mashpee to vote on a zoning amendment without a development agreement in place. So, if we want to use the next several meetings as an educational process, as you suggest, Evan, I think that's fine. I would advocate we continue to also, you know, stick to what our charge is, which is the zoning, and run parallel paths so that, you know, you have, you have a development agreement that's informed by what the zoning will allow. Because I'm struggling with how you come up with a development agreement not knowing what the zoning will provide for.
No, the zoning is, for sure, we've said this from the start, an important component of this proposal and of the development agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I just think we're too far ahead with the zoning. Do you know what I mean? I think that we need to start to see the development agreement application and, you know what I mean? Like, I do, I get what you're talking about, the parallel path, but the zoning is just so far ahead, I can't, I'm having trouble understanding it without the components of the development, not even, like, seeing the pieces of the development agreement, the application. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do. I'm struggling with the zoning being so far ahead. I don't feel like we've done anything on zoning.
Oh, we have a bylaw.
Yeah, we have a, we have a draft, we have a draft of a bylaw that we're, that we get to opine on and change and update and agree on. We have a draft of a bylaw. We don't have a bylaw. We haven't done anything on zoning.
I don't even have a draft development agreement application.
We don't have, we've done nothing on zoning. Let's just be clear, except read the proposed bylaw. We've done nothing on zoning. So, to say the zoning is way ahead of the development agreement, it isn't.
Would the seventh be too early to try to set something up for a little bit of an educational kind of thing prior to our meeting?
The seventh?
Yeah. Or would that be too quick, or should we defer that to the next meeting?
What was this topic of the seventh?
The topic of the seventh was neighborhood design setbacks and lot coverage. The following was densities and building heights, and then the last one was parking and parking ratios.
And that was the seventh and the 21st?
Seven, 21, 28.
Can you consolidate the dimensional conversation with the density conversation and height conversation into the 21st? And would that give adequate time to produce the design guideline?
What did you say? I don't think we'll have design guidelines by that stage.
By the 21st?
You want to put the setbacks and the lot coverage on the 21st?
It was just a suggestion, could that, meeting could be consolidated in one, and we forego the conversation on the seventh.
That makes...
And if the design guideline's not available, maybe we could still have that opportunity to review the, you know, the urban design principles built in together and give them a little bit more time to respond to the comments received from the board and the community.
That's, I'm fine with that.
So, then we would just follow through on our regular business on the seventh with no additional conversation with regard to the zoning.
Though, could we, to Jack's point, is that an opportunity to do some sort of broader education on what you were suggesting?
I think what I'm suggesting is that that happened on the 21st.
Okay.
As a more comprehensive conversation with all of the dimensional pieces. Because really, the conversation that I think is beneficial to the board is one of architecture and design and the methodology and rationale from the architectural perspective, why what is being proposed is being proposed. Because I think there's a contrast, obviously, between what zoning allows today and what is being proposed. And the reality is, our zoning bylaw today bears the outcome, the, what our zoning incentivizes to construct is a pattern of development that is not what's being discussed or contemplated here. So, there's really, it's apples and oranges. I think those differences and the reasons why those differences exist need to be elaborated and discussed to the board within, really, within the context of the proposed, though. I don't think it can be separate because it's intentional. So, it would be my proposal to have that conversation. If the additional time helps the applicant, great. And if we can accommodate that entire conversation on the 21st, that's the educational opportunity is really an architectural and design conversation relative to the dimensional criteria proposed in the zoning. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah. So, and to the comment made earlier during public comment, and it's been made over the weeks, you know, is there an opportunity, there has to be an opportunity, to talk about what current zoning would allow today versus what we're being, what's being proposed?
Yeah.
You know, if we were to develop 187 acres based on today's zoning, what would that look like to the town of Mashpee versus what's being proposed?
It's not pretty.
No, I don't think it is.
Well, some scenario.
So, we, so that's, that's, that's an important piece.
Yeah, I think, just so for the board's knowledge, I've been working on a build-out analysis of townwide. I'm getting through the residential part piece now, moving into the commercial piece. As I started the analysis, just to give you rough numbers, I did a rough build-out of the portion of the core area. So, it's really actually the area south of the Rotary between Route 28 and Great Neck Road South would accommodate 18 commercial subdivisions. That's a lot, that's a lot of curb cuts onto those roadways. So, that's just one example of me. So, I'm in the process of building that out for the board and for the community and for the applicant to have those discussions. And then, you know, part of this is going to be looking at, you know, the housing need and what we're able to provide under current zoning. And based on where I'm at, we are not able to provide much more housing. So, that's, I think that's really the evolution of the conversation we need to have is one of design, but ultimately, one of what the need is, what current zoning allows, and what the design implications of current zoning are in those areas.
Right, and then what's being proposed and the difference. Yeah, good.
Chairman, so don't forget what you just found, Tom Fadala's analysis of the OSID.
Yes.
He found it, remember, years ago? We had him do it. So, please include that in it.
I will.
Because that was super interesting.
Will do.
Relevant, you know, whatever's relevant to the current situation.
So, that is forthcoming. It's a lot of work, and the planning department is extraordinarily busy right now. Everything is happening to our department at once, so, but it is a top priority, and I anticipate it being completed within the next two weeks.
Okay. So, back to the seventh, or we're going to, so seventh will be a regular meeting. 21st will be the meeting where we have some, you know, assuming you can get the design...
And John, if I may, as long as everyone's comfortable with looping those two topical meetings together, I mean, we don't have to do it that way. We could have that separate conversation at another regular meeting. I think it's just the consensus needs to be made between the applicant and the board. So, we can do it at once on the 21st, or we could defer one of those conversations to later. I think there's a benefit to having them both at one time.
They kind of go hand in glove.
Yeah, I think they do.
They do, yeah.
You can always see how it goes, and if it's too much, you could push it off.
Yeah, you can just continue the meeting there.
We can always start at three.
At noon.
That time, you want a brunch, breakfast?
Washing that.
I think it's great.
You ain't sliding that stupid.
Okay. So, you can, you'll work with folks to get that together.
Regular meeting on June, or July 7th with no discussion relative to the next topical meeting, and we'll take the next meeting relative to dimensional criteria and density and height and put that in one meeting on the 21st. Do I have this accurately?
Correct.
Sure.
And is there, to your earlier comment, is there any opportunity for a broader education of urban...
In the interim?
Yeah.
I don't know what it would be. I really think we would look to the 21st for that conversation.
I thought you were doing the educational piece on the 21st.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
That was my suggestion.
Okay, good. Everybody cool with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I won't be here next meeting because that'll be your planning.
That's just our meeting. You're welcome to come.
And if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I, I do have some comments way back, roll it back about 15 minutes.
Go right ahead.
Back to your original presentation. So, looking at the core area, transition area, and edge area, I got, I have a very good visual in front of me. That makes sense, right? But a lot of the comments were, for me, again, it's all about the visual. So, and I understand you're looking at, you know, zoning of the entire project. For me, I would, I was curious about, and you don't, you don't even have to have the answers now, but maybe it'll be helpful if you can come with the 21st. Do you envision this being broken up into six phases, seven phases, something along those lines? And if that is the case, what would be the first phase? Would it be, you know, the continuation of the commercial center over to, and do you, if that is the case, if one, whatever segment is along the lines of first to be developed, do you have a, I don't know what you would call it, but like, if you could, like, block the housing, so you could see, visualize on a map just like this, but just add in just little blocks, say, okay, these will be buildings. And then, here's the roads. And then, and again, I understand it might involve potential curb cuts, so I know I'm open, it's kind of like Pandora's box, if you will, a little bit. But I don't know if you already have, like, if you go back to your office, you might say, phase one, here it is.
So, can I respond, John?
Sure, absolutely.
So, in order to come up with the numbers that were in the proposal to the RKG, the Economic Impact Analysis Consultant, has done, we did what, and in order to come up with the density ranges in the, in the core, the transitional, we did what's called a test fit, which is, you know, we tried out these things, but it's not a design, per se.
Okay.
It says, it says, these are the typologies of housing that could fit in these various colored areas. And if we put them there, this is how many units of housing we thought they could do. And this is, and the scale is relative to the street design and all that kind of stuff. So, we could show you the test fit, but we, you can't mistake that as our plan because that, it isn't a plan. The plan is going to be later, when we actually are working on the specific with a builder, say, you know, we find, well, Poa is one of our builders that we hope to work with. So, we have just really a gentle person's agreement on, yes, we would like to work together. That's, that's as far as we've gotten. But they, they have certain typologies that they've used and the other developments that they've done, and we would have to try and say, okay, we have an idea about where that would go, but we would actually then get into the design process. Okay, this is the size of the, of the building that they want to build. How many will they do? How many units will they focus on? And then we'll, you know, we'll, we'll design that. And, you know, that's kind of the process. And, you know, Ron Bonvey is a local developer, and he also would like to have a place to build on as well. And so, he's looked at a couple of different parts of the, of the red area, I think, is where he's mostly interested in, or the pink area. And so, you know, he has his architect. The architect would come in and say, this is what we do, and, you know, his 55 and over with parking underneath. over with parking underneath the building is kind of what he's mentioned. And we would say, okay, that, that type of building would be best in this area. And then we would do the road, the roadways and the parking associated with it. So I'm not trying to avoid your question, I'm just saying, that's kind of what the process is. And I think it makes sense because otherwise, if we, if we got too far ahead on our design, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the benefit from the input of these people that are specialists in their fields, whether it's affordable housing or 55 and older, whatever.
So, and that was, that was a great response. And I totally understand, and that's why I said it's the, it's the real big picture. You have to know what you can do, and then you can kind of back in and backfill.
Right, right.
So, part two of my question, the reason why I asked that upfront, was you said upfront that, you know, it was going to be front-loaded with affordable housing, and more along the lines of the phase one of the, so if I'm talking about this first phase of the development, if, if you gave everybody here a little bit better visual what it possibly could look like, and what percent of affordable housing that would be, that would account for, that I think would be helpful for us to go, to kind of go for the, the bigger picture, to say, okay. But in that first phase, it would include a percentage of the affordable housing. And I know it, because it's, I, I got it, I understand it's the algorithm.
Affordable housing, as Ms. Wagon knows, it depends on tax credits, and it depends on, on, you have to get in line at the state. So POA, which is the, which is the likely, hopefully likely developer, would get in line at the state, and then they would wait until they get the tax credits that are necessary. And I think Aaron Gorstein said it, it's usually two or three rounds before you get it. So I think there's around, maybe two rounds a year, I'm not sure exactly. So, so we would want to get that started right upfront because there's obviously demonstrated need for that. And, but whether it comes in the second year or the, or the third year, I don't know. But, but he also has a type, a building type that he wants to use that is the sort of the sweet spot of getting these tax credits. They're used to managing buildings of this size. And so, yes, we believe that the, the affordable housing would be front-loaded because, you know, it'll be more than the other units that we are building. So it could easily be, you know, 50 units of affordable housing and, you know, which, if it's a, if it's a 10% requirement, that would be 500 units in total, of which the 50 affordable would be 10%. So, but the 50 might come in the first 100 units, or the first 125 units. I'm, I'm just speculating here, but I'm, I'm telling you the kind of thing. Obviously, we want to position ourselves, given the need, to whatever facilitates the development of that housing. And then I've also had discussions with him about, because workforce housing is another area that we want to focus on, but doesn't come with the subsidies. And so, you know, I said, could we have a mixed income, so it's not just affordable, it's affordable and the, you know, maybe the building next to it is more of a workforce housing and then, you know, so it's, so it's a neighborhood. We're trying to build neighborhoods here that aren't just made up of one thing, you know, that are varied, varied in use, varied in, in the type of building, varied in height, because I think that's what makes a wonderful place. There's a place-making aspect to this. It's not just building, buildings. It's building a place that this town citizens are going to be proud of, you know. And it's going to, each time we do something, we want it to add to the, what's already done, so it's, gets better collectively. So that's the sort of general idea. And I know the frustrating part sometimes is, oh, you will, you want more specificity, but we really need to get the, this kind of authority from the commission and you to be able to go and talk to these developers and say, you know, there's an area that we could put 45 units of affordable housing, you know, let's talk about the building type. What's, what, what is most efficient for your side of the table, you know? And so, so I, I think it's a collaborative process and, you know, and right now, of course, you know, the lumber prices are completely out of control, so nothing would probably happen until.
It's coming down, though.
Timing.
Yeah, yeah, timing is a big issue.
Time will go in our favor.
Interest rates, yeah. So, but, but we don't have the permissions that we need to be able to go out there and talk to these other housing developers.
Yes, I just wanted to tie in one last question.
Please.
So, and the reason, again, this is, this is all about the, according to the context of the topic that we're talking about today. And the reason why I mentioned all, that whole thing was because I'm assuming affordable housing and the higher density would, would fall into this higher, you know, the pink area as you displayed up there. So it's food for thought, so when you go back, you can say, okay, because for me, it's all about, and I think a lot of people mentioned it, the visual aids, visual aids.
Well, I, actually, I would just say that the affordable, affordability, affordable housing needs to be located next to services. And so, because often people don't, you know, don't have more than one automobile or something. So, so walkability is a big component of it. And so I would say that there may very well be some affordable housing on the north side of 151, in the yellow, in the yellow area, which has a lot of convenience up there next to the stop and shop in that area. So that could easily be a, a place for this type of housing. It would be of a, you know, in the transitional zone, they are, residential uses are allowed, the buildings tend to be, you know, more modest in their size. And so, so I, it could be in the core as well. You know, we just need to talk with the develop, with the builder, you know.
Understood.
And it's a cost of delivery issue, too. So where there's a site that's the easiest to develop, proximity to, to convenience, all that kind of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And that, on the north side of market, it's also accessible to town, town services, to schools, to all that kind of stuff. We think it's a wonder, could be a wonderful place for affordable housing.
And I won't talk about fire trucks, I'll leave that question out.
I'll sit.
It's easy to get to the fire station, too, right?
Go ahead, Dennis.
We're looking at this project as one project, the whole thing, right? The, the different areas. So doesn't that kick off thresholds that have to be, you know, like the DRI and, and different, you know, things that if they, because we're looking at one project, not, you know, phase one, phase two, phase three. Right now, we're looking at this as a whole project. So shouldn't that kick off?
I think you're talking about the technical bulletins?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I requested from the Cape Cod Commission a list of technical bulletins that were, would apply, and we'll see if they give them to us.
All right, because I, I was, I looked in that book and I didn't see what kicks the thresholds off, you know? But I don't want to look at this as a whole project now, but if we're only going to do phases and that don't kick the studies off, you know, I mean, we should.
It's an overlay district, isn't that all addressed in the overlay district anyway?
I don't know.
Because you, even look at New Seabury, they had four different phases going on, but they, they were all encompassing in that one project.
Yeah, but they had to do all them studies.
Yeah, but it wasn't individual one at a time based on the phase they were on, because it's all on the overlay.
You don't want it segmented so it doesn't trigger or start.
Yeah, I don't want to say, I want, you know, because we're looking at this whole overlay, it could, they could do what they want, but I want to make sure we're not bypassing the thresholds that we, they should have met with the whole project.
Go ahead, Eliza.
I, I can respond to that. So the Cape Cod Commission Act has different types of applications that one can bring. You can, if you trigger a threshold, you can go through the DRI process. But there's also this development agreement process that's set forth in the Commission Act, which is what we've, what we're seeking, and what the town has agreed to be a party to, and the commission has approved. So the idea of a development agreement is, it is in lieu of a DRI. So the Cape Cod Commission will issue a development agreement authorizing this proposal, and then no DRI review is required for something that's been approved under a development agreement.
Now, if, so you know how DRIs have mitigation?
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but sometimes under a development agreement, you don't want certain mitigation that would come under the DRI. You want something else.
That, that's right, there's more flexibility.
It gives you more flexibility. So let's say, I don't know, we didn't want a traffic light somewhere, right, that a DRI would require, but we could say, oh, we'd like a, we'd like a little bit more affordable housing instead. Do you know what I mean? Like you can, you can negotiate.
Treat them.
And I think, you know, one of the reasons, there are many, but one of the reasons why a development agreement makes sense here is a DRI is only good for seven years. And you don't want to be permitting this as multiple, multiple DRIs. So with a development agreement, you can look more comprehensively and allow for phased construction over a longer period of time.
Right, that makes sense to me now.
Thank you.
It doesn't waive the right for mitigate, for mitigation.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts from the board?
I'm going to hold my comments.
Thank you. Please.
Just briefly, when you went through the transition, you said industrial area. Can you just elaborate on what you envision as, I know, commercial, you have something, you sell it, you ring up the register, but in industrial, making things?
Making, maker spaces, yeah.
Is it a bakery? Is it a bicycle factory? Is it, you know, do you have any?
I love both of those things.
Do you have any, you know, thoughts along industrial?
Not really, although make, sorry, what was?
He bakers on a bike, baby.
B and B.
You know, I think, we're trying to get people out of cars, right? So if people could walk to work, if they live there, could walk to work, if there was industry of some kind there that people could, could rent a, you know, a bay of a, of a building and have their business there, seems to me that would be something that we would, we would really like to have. So beyond that, I haven't really given much thought, except for, I think we should allow it. Basically, what we want to do is, is get through this process and then have people come to us with ideas about how they can use it, you know? And I think, you know, last year, when we did a count of how many jobs there were in Mashpee Commons, there were 1,100 jobs, and maybe a few have been lost with COVID stuff, but that's pretty great. And I would like, I would hope that we could find a way of having another 1,100 jobs there. And that people didn't have to leave town to, to go to their job. So, I mean, that's kind of the vision, and that's kind of what we need to do, is to try and think of things that we could provide with this area that, you know, make the town have more options, more choices.
I would just add that within the definitions section of the proposed zoning, there's sort of explanations of the proposed uses that, as we work through this process, we'll obviously want to get your feedback on. But when you look at the uses on the first few pages, it's really important to also then cross-reference to the definitions section, because that's where it gives more examples of what's intended.
Thank you. Anybody else?
You looking for my motion?
Not yet, I have to thank, I have to, to thank the presenters first, Dennis. Then you can make a motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase, thank you, Eliza.
Thank you.
If there's no other business?
I have one question.
You shouldn't have let Mike come out.
Dennis, if it's about fire trucks, you're in trouble.
The 7th, is it much on the agenda?
We have to set a public hearing date for a submitted special permit application. I'd have to give a little bit more thought, but I think it's a relatively light agenda, but we could.
Because usually we, we take that one up because it's close to the 4th, you know, it's like.
Did last year.
How many people do you need to show up?
Three.
Just need to set a public hearing date. I think that's all that's on the agenda. Our next meeting.
All right, draw stars.
Because, you know, I'm just trying to think, I, we just received the petition. We could probably defer, well, we need to open a public hearing within, I don't, I don't have the, the regulatory timelines offhand, Dennis.
Get, get back to us on that.
But I, you know.
Dennis might get the night off.
Get, get back to us on that.
Okay, I will.
No, my, I'd like to run July 19th, because that's my birthday.
Okay.
We'll have your cake here for you.
I'd like to make a motion with adjourned.
I was going to say, was there a motion? All in favor?
30 years, I think, for a sign, 70.
Thank you very much.